Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the December 20th regular meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board. We are going to start this evening with a non-public meeting, so I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91- A colon 3, Roman numeral 2B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. Can I have a second? Heather? This is a roll call vote, so...
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Dan Klein, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Matt Bacon, yes.
Heather Smith, yes.
Gianna Jelcy, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. We are back in public. And the first order of business is approval of the agenda. I have one change. The motion to approve the hiring of a superintendent was listed under the non-public. That will be moved to public. We will be doing that as our first order of business after the approval of the agenda. Any other changes to the agenda? Okay. So, actually, so I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Can I have a second? Brian? All in favor? All right. Okay. So, our first order of business is to, or need a motion to approve the hiring of a superintendent? And Heather?
So, we're really excited about this next chapter, but I wanted to take five seconds to say while we're opening a new chapter, we're also closing a chapter, and so this moment is a bit bittersweet because closing that chapter, while well-deserved and well-earned, is still sad. But, on the opening new chapter side, I motion to approve the hiring of Dr. Robert Shapps, the superintendent, for a term of three years at an annual salary of $210,000 in accordance with the negotiated contract, and to further authorize Chair Denise Day to sign the contract on the board's behalf.
Can I have a second? Brian? Okay. And any comments? Brian?
I just wanted to add that this process, although it was long, but it was also short, but there was a lot of great people on the screening committee. We ran into a lot of really great qualified candidates. It actually was very eye-opening of what type of superintendents we have, or potential superintendents we have in this state or in this area. But when it came down to the final three, it was really, really tough, and we had some outstanding candidates that came through here. All of them would be more than qualified to do this job, but we had to pick one out of the three, and I believe Dr. Shapps was a, is a great person, but I also am looking forward to working with him in the future, seeing how he affects our children in the future, so...
All right. Thank you. Okay. Then, all in favor? And it is seven in favor. And congratulations, Dr. Shapps, and I'd like to invite you to the podium.
Thank you, and I, it's great to be back. I wanted just to thank the board. I feel honored and privileged to be selected as the next superintendent, and it's interesting. I really want to start out by thanking you for your trust and confidence in my leadership, and I look forward to building a strong and continuing effective co-governmentative team so with the board beginning in July. I also wanted to say how impressed I was with the search process. I wanted to thank the search screening committee and the superintendent search committee. It was thorough. Certainly, the level of participation, the opportunity to really see the district is really what attracted me, and I've always said that this is really a reciprocal process in as much as you are looking to find the right candidate, as a candidate trying to understand the life of a school system and the values, and the opportunity to spend the entire day to visit with so many stakeholders, to have conversations, including 29 middle school students, was not only rewarding, but it was revealing in terms of really speaking to what you value, the mission of the schools, and just the joy of learning that was present everywhere. So, I'm excited by that, and I think similar to your comment, I would like to thank Dr. Morris for making a welcoming day for me and having the opportunity to meet him and sit down to see the fruits of his tenure and his work here as superintendent, and also have the opportunity to meet administrators and all district staff. So, it's exciting. I have that nervous energy and excitement, and I'm looking forward to a smooth transition over the next six months and the opportunity to learn more. And as I said when I was talking to faculty members, it is about listening and learning before leading, and so I want to have that opportunity over the next few months to continue that process moving forward. So, thank you very much, and happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much, and we'll see you after the meeting, so do some paperwork. All right. So, continuing on with our agenda, are there any public comments tonight? Don't see any members of the public. So, approval of the minutes, we have quite a few to approve tonight. I kind of would like to maybe start with the one that needs to be corrected. So, for November 29th, oh, Amy, yes, you can explain what happened.
Yes, with the November 29th meeting, we were in this music hall without any microphones and no recording. So, when Brian made his motion, he made his motion to be 415,352. It was actually recorded as 450,352. So, the minutes need to be amended to say, strike out where it says 54,450,352 and change it to 54,415,352. I double-checked my notes, Dr. Morris's notes, and Suzanne Philippon's notes, and we all had the same, same amount recorded. It was just a typo.
What was the total difference?
Like 45,000, $35,000. It was just a 50 versus a 15, so it's just...
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
So, with that, can I have a motion to approve the amended minutes for November 29th? Yes, Brian? Second? Gianna? All in favor? And seven in favor. All right. And then, I don't know if folks are comfortable doing the remainder as a block for the November 30th, December... Okay. So, for November 30th and December 4th, is there someone that would like to make that motion as a block? Heather?
I motion to approve the November 30th, December 1st, and December 4th meeting minutes. That includes public and non-public.
Second? Matt? Okay. All in favor? Okay. Those minutes are approved, seven in favor. And then, we have the December 6th regular meeting minutes, and is there a correction to that?
Yes. At the end of the regular meeting minutes, and I can get this to you, Karen, we need to add that we came back into the regular meeting at 7:59 and made a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public session on December 6th for a period of one year. And the motion was made by Brian and seconded by Heather and was approved with a roll call vote of seven to zero. And I have that written down here. I can email that to you.
All right. Yes, Gianna?
I have two edits, but one I actually wanted to verify with Amy. One is on page 3 of 5, and it says, "In Amy's absence, Dr. Morris stated the default budget is in the amount of 318,732." That's obviously not the default budget. I'm assuming that's the difference between the default budget and... Right. So, that I would like to have it so that it says, say, "The default budget difference is in the amount of 318,000," so that's clarified. That's page 3 of 5 under C. Business Administrator. So, thank you for verifying that, Amy. You're here. You can escape. That was it. I just wanted to make sure the number was right. And then, on page 2 of 5, we've got two students' names who just need a couple letter substitutions for Haley Kavanaugh, Kavanaugh spelled with a K, and Mackenzie Cook. Cook does not have an E at the end. That's it.
Okay. And I just realized that I didn't actually, did you actually make the motion, Matt, to approve the minutes? I think I jumped right into the edits without actually getting a motion to approve them.
No, but I'm happy to, motion to approve the minutes of December 6th as amended.
As amended. Okay. Can I have a second? Brian? Okay. Any further changes to the December 6 minutes? Okay? All in favor? Seven in favor. Okay. Board, board announce, actually, it's in different order, but board announcements. I think it's because we were doing the hiring, but anyway, are there any board announcements tonight? Yes, Tom?
I just wanted to announce that I would not be running again in March, and so if someone's interested in running for the Durham seat, hopefully they'll come forward if any would like to talk to me about the duties of board. I'd just like to encourage them to get in touch with me.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Did you? Nothing? Okay. District announcements.
Oh, the button's gone. Okay. Hello, Rebecca Noe from Oyster River High School. A couple of announcements tonight. So, first, very proud and impressed by our cross-country team, so I know we've reported how they did through the division championship all the way to New England, but also they won Girls Cross Country Team of the Year in New Hampshire, and Patrick O'Brien won Coach of the Year for Girls Cross Country Coach, and so I just want to give them a huge kudos. They were wonderful all season long and really talented, so I wanted to make sure you knew about that. The music concerts over the past two weeks, I know we had to move one this week, but they've been absolutely amazing. The kids and the music department have done an amazing job, so I wanted kudos for both the kids and for our teachers. With teachers, last year, we started a staff appreciation week, and so it's just something we do the week before the holidays when we're taking a break. It can be a tough time of year in education anyway. Midterms come two weeks after we get back from vacation, and so it's just a nice way for teachers to know we value them and appreciate them, and just little treats all week, and so just if anyone wanted to send a note to them also, I know teachers always appreciate that. Speaking, coming back in two weeks, when we come back from vacation, there are two weeks of school until midterm, so I just want to put that out there, make sure people know that timeframe. The midterm schedule will be coming out on Friday in the newsletter, and then I'll send that out also the next two weeks when we come back, but just so parents can look for that. And then, Wednesday, January 24th is the day of the new semester. That's when quarter three will start, so just so people know that date. Any questions for me? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Rachel Blansett, DIJ Director for the District. It's been a minute since I've seen you all, so I have a few updates for you. For the high school, LGBTQIA+ and BIPOC, so the Black Indigenous People of Color student space, we just had our last meeting, meetings of the semester this week. I bought them donuts, and it was a nice chill space, and we were all just talking, and it's a small group of students, but mighty, but mighty, so they keep coming back. So, I'm hoping to recruit more folks or have students talk with other students and have them come, but given the return of students for most of the meetings we've had, I would say it's at least an enjoyable space that students are coming to. Professional development for teachers. So, we have had a limited amount of teacher workshop days. However, for the February Teacher Workshop Day, I am planning on having a professional development session for teachers in the afternoon. It will be from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. I'm hoping to do a bias boot camp workshop, so it's going to be hopefully a really intensive, you know, PD for teachers to really be able to brainstorm around different incidents that might come up, or, you know, self-analyze their own bias and think about how that impacts in teaching and all of those pieces. So, we are doing that, and then in March, we are bringing Glisten to do a four-part training series that builds off of one another and focuses on the intersections of identity. So, that would be open up to 50 teachers. We typically don't get that much, but I'm hoping it will be, you know, popular. That's going to take place the evening of Friday, March 15th, and then the day, so the Saturday after, on March 16th. So, excited for that. More details to come. I just did the semester UDL 101 presentations at the elementary schools, so I'm hoping that's going to kickstart some of these conversations as we move forward throughout the years and think about how universal design for learning is a great tool for all of our students. We also had a DIJ Director Retreat in October, so all of the statewide DIJ Directors, we came together, and we really just talked through all the work that we're doing, ways to collaborate, ways to kind of share work and all of those pieces, so it was a really enriching space. And actually, tomorrow, we'll be meeting the superintendents and the DIJ Directors in Concord to also connect and talk about how the roles and everything are going. Just two more updates. So, then, I also created, I spent some time over the summer, and I created this document, which in higher ed, they call a transition report. I am not leaving. However, I think it's important, I'm used to baking them every year, and so it essentially outlines just about everything that I did last year, and also important information for anyone to know in case, you know, I do decide to move on from this role, or, you know, someone does step into this role, and so it will be a written document really for anyone to reference and learn about what this role can be and, you know, where to go and important contacts and all those pieces, so I can definitely share a copy of that with you all if you would be open to that. And then, lastly, our DIJ community group, our last meeting was planned for the semester on Monday, but we unfortunately had to cancel due to the weather. However, new dates will be sent at the beginning of January for next semester meetings, so folks can look forward to an email about that. We're also planning a community event in the spring semester, and once again, all the agendas and meeting minutes can be found on the district website. So, with that, any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
I realize, hearing Rachel, I would be remiss if I did not mention Chaos and Kindness coming on Friday. And so, Chaos and Kindness came, the students all, we had two shows because not all the kids will fit into the auditorium. We had advisory activity that Rachel created on inclusion, and so every, all the students, as they were leaving the shows, were talking about how much they enjoyed it and how awesome it was. Their message of positivity and inclusion, that's one of their, they were already planned on coming, we'd already scheduled that, and I had told them what was going on in the school with the hate speech and what had happened, so I wanted them to be aware of their message was going to be even more important, so I just wanted to make sure that did go well with the students that were there. And we did have some students getting dismissed, so they did miss out on a really good time, but I think overall, the kids had a really good time and got a really good message from them. Any questions?
Where's the Instagram video of you dancing on the stage? I didn't see that.
So, since I was up there, I didn't record it. I did, I didn't know they were going to have a teacher dance-off at the end, and I'd actually gone out, we were helping in the hallways with some of the kids who were in advisory and switching, and so someone asked me if I missed the first one on purpose, and I said, "No, I had no idea they were doing that." So, I was in there for the second session when my advisory was in there, and so I did go onstage with the other teachers. But I'm hoping someone has a video. I would like to see all of that. I do have the first video, where a lot more teachers were there, so that one was posted that a student sent me. I asked them to send me that. The kids did love that part. Thank you.
Any other district updates? Okay. Assistant Superintendent?
Good evening. When we return from winter break, we will have our winter STAR assessments, so that will happen probably the second week, around the second week that we get back, but principals will send information out about when those will be for each school because they do vary a little bit by date. I met with the social studies department at the high school about the civics exam. There was a new technical advisory that came out this year about how civics within schools and what that looks like in the curriculum, and also some more information about how we need to implement the civics exam. So, I met with the social studies department, and there, they are following the technical advisory and following the RSA in regards to what they need to be doing for the civics exam. Right now, all of our seniors have passed, so we're in a good place with that. Eureka squared. We have a new Eureka Math, well, it's an updated Eureka Math program, and I just want to thank Sarah Farwell and Ellen Irving for all the work that they do with, and all the members of the math committee, and Misty, David, and Bill for the work that they've done to implement that. The fifth grade teachers have been involved with additional professional development for the implementation of Eureka squared, and I want to thank all of them for the work that they've done this year as well. The sabbatical program, we have sent out, I have sent out the application for that, so if there are any faculty members that qualify and are interested, we're accepting applications until January 15th, at which time the sabbatical committee will confer about all of the different applications. I just want to thank publicly Julie Kelly, a member of a sustainability committee. She is stepping down. She has had two children go through the district and has participated on the sustainability committee for a number of years, and I just want to thank her for her service to the district and to the students and to all of us for her work. And if there are any parents that are interested in participating on that committee, we do have a seat available or multiple seats. If anyone's interested, just reach out and let me know. And lastly, in your backup, you have information about the teacher workshop day. Matt had asked that question at a previous school board meeting regarding the February Teacher Workshop Day, which is on the 13th, it's a Tuesday. We typically don't have a teacher workshop day in February. We just have one this year because we anticipated that the primary would be in February, so we moved the March teacher workshop day off of March and put it into February. So, if we were going to move it, we would move it to March 15th. In talking to area superintendents, the, March 15th is when Rochester and Somersworth, the two, those two districts have teacher workshop days on March 15th. Somersworth does not, but they also do not have February 13th. So, we'd actually, by moving it, we'd actually be in more compliance with RSA So we'd actually, by moving it, we'd actually um, be in more compliance with RSA one eighty-eight. Um, we wouldn't have any issue with the number of days. Um, and that would be more of the traditional place. If you decided to move it to the fifteenth, that would be a more traditional place that we have had that teacher workshop day.
Just a question about that, because I heard Rachel talking about her plans for the February professional development day. I assume that switching it to March fifteenth doesn't mess up any plans as far as.
So I would look to the principals to that, but I don't believe they have anyone from the outside coming in. Yeah, I don't think that, so it's all internal. Yep.
Yeah, that will require a motion of the board.
Yes, Brian?
I'd like to make a motion to approve moving the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four teacher workshop date to Friday, March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, a second. Uh, Tom, all right, any further discussion? All in favor? Seven in favor. So move that from February thirteenth to March fifteenth.
And I have some updated surveys if you'd like them, Jim.
Suzanne, thank you very much for your work with that, moving that day. I appreciate it. Yeah.
Okay. Um, superintendent's report.
I am just giving you updated copies of the competency uh, work that the committee did in relation to the survey. Uh, I first of all, want to say thank you to Tom and Dan and Gianna who um, attended the meetings. They were awesome in terms of their participation. I would also like to thank the two teachers, Val and Caroline, our two administrators, Bill and Dan, Alita, Suzanne. Um, but the stars of the show, as always, in Oyster River, were our students. And I think that um, Tom and Gianna, who are sitting right next to the kids, were totally in awe of their participation, their knowledge and their fluency in talking about uh, competency-based uh, reporting. And uh, it was really a pleasure. The, after the first meeting, Bill told me that the girls wanted to have more meetings because they enjoyed them so much. And uh, so we had one more and I think they were disappointed there weren't more. But I'm not, because we needed to get the survey off to the university. So um, UNH Survey Center has a draft and now they're making sure that it aligns with um, how they can gather the data that, that we want. So I, I think that we did a phenomenal, phenomenal job in a very intense couple of meetings. And I couldn't be more proud of uh, the work that came out of that group. A lot of alignment and Gianna was really good at finding consistency in terms of making sure we were using the same language throughout the report. Tom was great in terms of digging deeper into, you know, what exactly we're meaning. Uh, people were putting variations of questions on. Uh, but you know, in truth, the survey that we developed in two thousand twenty held pretty well. It gave us a core to work from. And so uh, the, the, the work looks really good and I, I think the board will be pleased um, with the results when the Survey Center has them. So our goal is to put this survey out in mid-January, because your goal was to be able to see the results while you were the sitting board. So we should have the results in, in mid-February, towards the end of February. And um, and then from there, uh, we can peruse it and see what, see what the information tells us. So uh, thank you to everybody who participated on, on that committee. It was really a very, it actually turned out to be a very fun committee. Then I just wanna share, you know, I, I did share with you that after many, many years of working with Aramak and Jim Ruzicki being our facilities director, what we found as a district in these last couple of years with him gone is that we've outgrown the services that Aramak can provide. Amy and I negotiated an exit strategy today uh, where we'll, we will be able to hire our own facilities director uh, starting in February. Uh, we basically negotiated uh, an amount necessary for us to switch over and hire our own person. So I wanna thank Amy for that. Um, we also were able to negotiate a um, a settlement with them where we spend nothing to end up with the equipment that they had purchased uh, for us. So we'll be not, there'll be no buyouts. And um, I think that uh, the work that Amy and I did today was, was just exactly what we were hoping. And we'll be in a position, uh, we've advertised for the facilities director position, so we'll be in a position to hire our own facilities director um, bu- by the end of January. And so I'm pretty excited by that. Long time coming. So uh, that's my update for this evening. Um, Madam Chair.
So these updated surveys, are, what are the changes? Are they just minor, minor edits or is there anything substant- substance? Jill?
Go ahead, Gianna.
Yes, Gianna.
Um, there's, from what was in the packet, there are, uh, the, the draft that was in the packet was unfortunately the draft that was went to the meeting. So I know that Suzanne just quickly pulled the other one and uh, brought it over. One of the biggest things is, is trying to make with the consistency, like we actually missed one because it uh, on the new one, like if you look at the students, one's the shorter survey. It says S two, how is the transition for the middle school to the high school grading system? One of the things we wanna make sure is grading is reporting. Actually, grading, we leave it on that one. I actually lied. That one's different. Grading system, it still stays for the new one, but it was trying to make it so language is consistent. Because when people are learning about this and understanding it, um, if you keep switching saying competency-based reporting or competency-based regting or it gets confusing. So a lot of it was actually language changes to make sure it was consistent. And some of it was actually just tidying it up to make sure the questions were clear in getting at what we wanted the survey to ask. Um, to make sure that parents, teachers and students were understanding how the reporting worked and that they were getting value out of it and getting into the details of how the feedback worked for them to understand. And those questions would be different with those different stakeholder groups. And so we were trying to make sure the language was focused on that to address those, those things.
I, I think I would also add Denise, that another change that the committee made was to try to eliminate leading answers.
Yeah.
Um, so there was a couple of questions where they were put in the negative and therefore the answers invariably would come out negative. And so we neutralized those questions so that we would get a real feel for where people's heads are at in relation to competency-based reporting.
An example of that would be like if all the questions, if you're getting a rating of like whether or not it was um, very difficult. Um, so one time it was like it was just very difficult, really difficult, not difficult. And then we realized that actually that skewed it, because it made you expect that it'd be difficult. So if you said very difficult and then it has scaled down to very easy, then it becomes more of a, a neutral and more honest way of getting at the responses without biasing how you think about it.
Um, I did notice one little wording thing um, on um, P thirteen. This is on the longer, longer survey, the parent and teacher. And then um, T six, so on, on T six, which is the teacher one, it says um, allowing students to receive opportunities to relearn, revise and reassess. On the parent version under P thirteen, it just says, my students, students relearn, revise and reassess. I feel like there should be that receive opportunities wording in there as well, maybe. It just, to me, it, it, I, I felt like there was a word missing in that P thirteen. And then when I saw T six, I was like, yeah, that's it. It's, it's the receive opportunities to relearn, revise and reassess. So. Did you? So P thirteen.
P thirteen.
On the uh, on the parent one, yes.
Yeah.
Um, where it says, it's like the second, well, the first one says making learning goals clear. The second one is my students, students relearn, revise and reassess. I believe it should be receive opportunities to relearn, revise and reassess. That, that way it will use the same language that is in the teacher question.
Probably will talk to Andy about it, because that, there is cross-pollination between the questions.
Yep.
That's important, so.
Yep, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for catching that Denise.
Oh, yes, Tom.
Um, just to answer your question a little bit more, I think we also did some cutting of questions. I think it's, we pared down some questions we thought were, you know, maybe outdated and, and some identifier questions, which we thought, why are we, you know, trying to identify in this way? What's the purpose? So there was some of that. One thing that did occur to me after the meeting was if we're, mm, our understanding is we're gonna use these for sixth, seventh, eighth and ninth grade. I think that was the agreement beginning. But if we're gonna do ninth grade, we have to have some way of differential of not including the Barrington students, because the Barrington students did not go through the middle school. So, so, so I, I didn't see anything in here that would, would kind of deal with that.
Right.
So maybe that's something you could ask Andy, how he would, how he would do that. I think that needs to be taken care of.
Thank you.
Um, this is more for the sixth, seventh and eighth graders, I imagine. But are we gonna be giving time during the school day for the students to take this survey?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll do it during um, flex time or bobcat time.
Will we have the teachers, if possible, explain what the, the scale works? How it works with the somewhat agree, strongly agree, kind of explain the wording of that?
Yeah, we'll have the students explain it to the, to the teacher.
Perfect, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
We can make a script for the teachers. I just wanna make sure that all the kids get the same directions and have the same conversation.
I just, like, we see this somewhat agree, strongly agree all the time as adults, but as kids, I don't know how many times they come across that, but a script is a great idea. Thank you.
Gianna?
I've got uh, two more things. One of it just on uh, P one. So one of these, remember you're looking at the survey, those codes are telling you what, where that question goes to, because obviously the parents are not getting the teacher questions and vice versa. So this actually kind of goes through, I don't know what you use it in survey speak, but like a dichotomous key where you choose something and it goes through, so you, nobody's getting all these questions. But on P one, um, I just have a typo where employees has an E in it. We just need to ax the E. Um, that one just keeps on disappearing. Um, and then this was a question that came up during the uh, meetings, but it wasn't, it was something that uh, we didn't have clarified or had directly discussed here. And so one of the things was, is a question of whether or not the student survey should go to the tenth grade as well, because we only discussed going to the ninth grade. And I'll see the reasoning why I'm asking this, is that when you're talking about people who experienced the uh, both uh, reporting systems, because you've got the competency-based reporting at the middle school and then in the high school. With the ninth grade, they've now hit both, right? But at the time they get this survey, they will um, have experienced one semester of the traditional grading system within the high school. So the question really I have to you is whether or not we wanted to ask the same questions of the tenth grade who have had three semesters of the traditional grading system or not? Or whether or not you think we can have enough data from asking for that kind of transition? I know that Dr. Morse discussed this, that the, that the counselors will be actually asking them questions later on to uh, be able to get more of a compare and contrast between the two, so we can get more information, because you never, there's no, we're not looking for an answer here. We're, we're gathering information, so we're trying not to bias it. So it's just, that way you can actually have more data on it. But it's just a question to the rest of the board of whether or not the survey should go to the tenth grade or if we stop at the ninth grade for that question, but.
I guess I, my, my concern with including the tenth um, is part of it is then you're looking at COVID years more when they were homebound and, you know, as opposed to ninth where it was just eighth grade last year. So I, I, I don't know, I'm a little bit, my, my thinking is that we, originally our intent was to just do ninth grade and so my inclination is to go that way, but I don't know how other folks feel.
I would just ask, what class was the first? So the, the first kids in the middle school to start the competency-based? They've already graduated?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then.
I'm happy leaving. I just wanted to posit that question.
I, I think, I, I said it in the first committee meeting, I think, um, I think there's value in, in adding the tenth grade. We know who they are. We, this, the survey, the, the beauty of the survey is it differentiates, it tells us who's answering the survey. So there wouldn't be a lot of inherent confusion in adding the tenth grade. Um, and I think the longer experience with the numeric traditional grading system would better equip them to have fully thought-out thoughts on the answers to the survey. Whereas the ninth graders are gonna be pretty fresh to it. They might have, they might, they might have different answers by the end of their first year, let's put it that way. So that, that would just be my thought for the value of it.
So it would require a motion, because it's different than the motion that you made originally where it was limited to ninth grade? So if you're going to change it, it will require proactive action tonight?
So I, I basically agree with Dan, that's why I brought it up, but obviously. So I could, I can make a motion, see if we, hold on a sec. I, I make a motion to expand the question of which grade level are you currently in? And to have it so the students in the tenth grade also are given access to the survey.
Is there further discussion as far as feelings one way or the other? Okay, all right, then um, all in favor of the motion to expand to tenth grade? And it looks like we have four in, four in favor, so Gianna, raise your hand. So it's Gianna, Heather, Matt and Dan, all opposed. So that would be um, Tom, Brian and myself, but the uh, in favor, they get it. So it'll be expanded to tenth grade. Do you get that Karen? All right, okay. All right, um, anything else, Dr. Morse?
No, that would, that'll do it Denise, thank you.
Business administrator?
Getting my steps in today. Okay. Oh, that does shut that down. Is that okay Denise? I just need to put my paperwork down. Okay, so in your packet, you have your MSDSB, which is the default budget form that goes to the Department of Revenue. Um, at the last meeting, superintendent had gone over with you what the default number was. And the only change to the number that he had told you that evening was, uh, in this um, report, I include food servicing grants. So the number is a little higher, just so those numbers, um, they are revenue neutral, so it really doesn't impact the tax rate, but we do have to put them on the default budget form. So the default budget for um, FY twenty-four, twenty-five is going to be fifty-five million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Does anybody have any questions on the form?
Can I make a motion to accept the default budget as presented?
Brian made a motion. Can I have a second? Heather, um, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the default budget as presented, and that is seven in favor.
Thank you. Also in your packet is the school warrant, and we do have a few changes and a recommendation. Uh, at the last meeting, Brian had mentioned including a warrant article after the collective bargaining agreement for the tutors to state, uh, shall the school district, if warrant article number four is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address warrant article four cost items only. And historically, Oyster River has not had this warrant article after their collective bargaining agreement, so that's why I didn't include it, but if the board so chooses, we can just insert that warrant article.
Just a reminder of why um, I put it on all mine is because if this contract, although our contracts generally do pass, there's no such thing as a guarantee. Um, if it doesn't pass, we have no recourse until the next fiscal year. So what this allows us to do is have a special election um, regarding the cost of the contract, again, at a later point, if the board decides to. The board doesn't have to, but they can if they wish. It just gives you the authority to do that.
I, I just question, I mean, I, I feel like it's setting it up to be like, okay, go ahead and defeat it. And we'll just, I don't know, I, I, it's, I think it's because we haven't had it before. Um, so I'm kind of a little leery of it, I think, um, and.
Well, the problem is, you're gonna have to explain to the tutors, if it doesn't pass, why you didn't have it in here to at least make an effort to, to pass their contract, otherwise they're not gonna have a contract.
I, I hear that. Again, you know, we, we haven't had this situation at all and I, I just, I don't know. I just kind of wonder if you're just kind of opening a door to folks they're feeling like negative, like, you know, because of saying, oh, okay, we're gonna go ahead and defeat it, you know? And I, I don't know, it just, I, that's my thinking about it.
By the mere fact that we haven't had it in the past. By the mere fact that we haven't had it in the past doesn't mean, if you've made mistakes in the past, which I think we have by not adding this, we're going to continue to make the mistake. And at some point, it's going to happen or could happen. And if you don't have that, it doesn't cost anything, it doesn't do anything. It, what it does is it gives you another option. It's, I don't understand how you think it's going to cause a, something not to be passed because you have a backup plan.
I think it's confusing, I think it confuses the voters. That's my opinion. I think it would be confusing.
I've used it on every single warrant article, articles that I've used, and no one's ever been confused by it.
Heather?
I think it's a reasonable suggestion. It's built some suspenders. It makes sense. And the contract for the tutors, if we want to start implementing it, is probably a good place to start because we will want to put something in likely for the teachers next year. And so this gets that sort of thing, that process going, gets people used to seeing it in the tutor contract. There's no nice way of saying this, it's not a super big chunk of change. So it just sort of normalizes seeing the language sooner before we, we will really need to put it in for the teacher contract. And so I would be in favor of adding it.
Can I just ask, were we to approve this, how would we articulate the value of the intent behind this at the deliberative session? To the public?
There's a notes, there's a notes section at the bottom where we could explain and can explain all the warrant articles.
Yeah, I'm just asking sort of how we would construct that value proposition to the public. We're having sort of an internal discussion as the value of, like, how, how it would function in terms of supporting the district responding to the failure of the warrant. What would be the value proposition to the public?
The value is if it doesn't pass, you have no, you cannot bring it back again until the next fiscal year. So basically, the tutors will have no contract and they will be stuck where they are.
So.
But also keep in mind, your Article III, which is our operating budget, already has that wording built in, that if that doesn't pass, we can go back and have a special, special, one special meeting in accordance with RSA 4013 to take up the issue revised operating budget only. It's the same exact wording, it's just broken out in a separate article because that's the way the DIA requires it.
But, so that language, and I'm sorry, Gianna, that language is to rework with the budget that was passed by the voters. What you want to do is, would we be able to go back to the negotiating table?
Yes.
But we'd still have to have, the voters approve any contract we renegotiate, right?
Yes.
Which would come in the next election?
Nope, you'd have a special election.
You could have a special election, and that's what this does.
And it's happened before in other districts that I've been in where it fails and you have to come back again. I've had, I have to go back in, one of them I had to go back in September for a teacher's contract, and it finally passed, but we had to renegotiate it.
Do we have this wording anywhere? I just, I don't see it in the packet.
It's in the, in your blue, in your blue folder.
If I could just, could I, could I add to this discussion, Denise? So one of the amazing things about coming into New Hampshire is the fact that when you negotiate, people are motivated to negotiate. In Maine, there was no negotiation that would be done by Christmas and warrant articles created for January. The reason there wasn't is because Maine didn't have the same law that New Hampshire has, which means that if you don't have your negotiations done by Christmas, there's no warrant article to put there for the voters to consider, which means there's no pay increase. In Maine, if a budget fails, you go out every six weeks until it passes. There's no default budget. So one of the, I understand what Brian's doing and suggesting, but one of the downsides of having a warrant article like this is that it takes away the motivation to conclude negotiations in a timely fashion, and it could put your negotiating team at the table for a full year as opposed to three months to get through a contract. So I appreciate what Brian's putting on the table, but it's also, the way it currently is structured is a motivator to get the work done and to come to conclusion in a timely fashion and not drag out negotiations in, into the winter months. On a supportive level, I get where he's going and I can see why we would do that. I just want you to know that if you do that, there are also implications to doing that, which means there'd be no drive to get done by Christmas on any particular contract because it fails, oh, well, we can just go back and negotiate some more and have a special meeting. The other thing about special meetings is they're costly. So we piggyback, you know, elections, but when you run a special meeting, that cost is 100% on, on the district. So just some other thoughts to consider as you consider this. I'm not saying I'm against what Brian's saying, I just wanted you to understand from my perspective as a superintendent who's worked in two different states, the process that we have in New Hampshire really expedites people coming to closure in a relatively quick fashion so that you're not hanging out negotiating and, and trying to get things done over an extended period of time.
Do, I'm sorry, do we have, do we, did you make a motion? Go ahead.
Do we have to decide this, this meeting or just give this? It seems like there's like, something to think.
I, I need it for the January.
We can bring it back to the next meeting on January 6th, but it has to be decided by that meeting because we then have to get everything ready for the public hearing.
Right, on the 10th. So you could have one more meeting with it, Tom, if you want to deliberate on it, think about it, gnaw on it, give you some breathing time for them.
I'll just, I'll just add what I was thinking about with the tutor contract is the fact that it's the, from my understanding, we discussed this before, this is like the first tutor contract in the state, that we had to come up with this one de novo. And so in a way, we're, it's something I want people to be thinking about is that we're, we're leading the way on this one. And so how we're wording it and how we're addressing it actually is important because it becomes the model. So that's something of concern. Since there's not other question of like a contract being renewed in this case, it's a new one, they would still be having the salary rate and how they're being paid for now as opposed to having something just being completely open. It would be, it'd be something that they don't have the contract in the same way with this as being a salaried employee is, is my understanding.
So what I think you're saying, Gianna, is that if the contract fails, they're being paid at their current rate and their current benefits. Being a new contract and trying to treat the tutors more, more like professionals, their current rate is substantially lower than what the negotiating team has recommended and you've all approved. So it would be, you know, a giant step backward if, if that contract failed.
Thank you. That's what I was just trying to make sure we're thinking that way because I saw a lot of, a huge amount of value in this, but I also understand what Brian is, is saying. I think I might actually have to give this one some thought.
So bring it back, Denise, in January?
Yes, and I guess my other question for the warrant is that we also have to talk about the Barrington, taking the Barrington warrant off. So that's the other piece of that.
Sure. So just in terms of the Barrington warrant, they went from going 110 miles an hour to going 100 miles an hour. So they're still very positive about renewing their contract with us, but they're trying to sync up our renewal with Dover's renewal so it makes it easier on them syncing up language and so forth. It was really a very, very good meeting. Brian, Tom, and Matt were there at that one, and the conversation was absolutely what you'd hope it would be, very positive. We talked about putting language in that actually Amy suggested related to making sure that Barrington never paid more than what Oyster River students pay, and we're going to tie that to the MS25. And there were some minor language suggestions that they made. We did get into discussion about whether they could influence this board in some substantial way, and I just basically said you can't if you join the district. Other than that, your tuition-paying school system, I said, but the motivator for us is $3.5 million worth of tuition that we get from you. So it's unlikely that the Oyster River Board is going to ever do anything to dramatically change our, our curriculum or our structure, largely because, one, it's not in Oyster River's interest to do things like that, and, two, we don't want to lose, you know, you as a customer. So that seemed to satisfy that issue. Matt, Tom, Brian, anything you want to add? So the reason we're taking it off is because it'll come back a year from now as a, a proposed warrant article. We are going to make some very minor changes in the language of the current contract because everything works well. And so it'll be, we'll be back next year.
All right, so it sounds like for the next meeting, we should have a draft that definitely takes off the Barrington.
Yes.
And then we'll have further discussion whether the board wants to approve this new article or not.
Okay, perfect. Does anybody have any questions on any of the other warrant articles? Okay, thank you.
There is no student rep report tonight because Maeve had a conflict, so she's not able to be here tonight. Finance committee report, nothing there. Superintendent search, Heather, your last chance if you have something you'd like to, to say.
So the press release will head out tomorrow, and Jen already has websites, changes ready to roll tomorrow. Parents, faculty, staff, community members, all the, the folks we hit with all the stuff earlier, they're all going to get the press release tomorrow as well. So it's going to go out through a bunch of different outlets, sharing the good news. And with that, I think we're done.
Not quite, we have one more thing. Appreciation of all your hard work, Heather. Just a token of our appreciation. And it just says, Heather Smith, outstanding service and dedication to the reform of the school district. Thank you.
Any Brad-sized bird said chocolate was preferable to flowers.
I'll try not to let my dog eat these like she did the ones I pilfered from the Mast Wait meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Unanimous consent, we have our policies. Oh, well, first of all, we have a PE teacher letter of resignation, then we have list of some policies. Does anyone have anything they wish to remove from unanimous consent for discussion? Okay, then I will make a motion to accept the unanimous consent agenda as presented, which includes a motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School Physical Education Teacher Letter of Resignation and list of policies for second read and adoption, which include JLCE, emergency care and first aid, JJIF, athletic policy sanctioning of sports, ACN, lactation accommodations, and, and that's it? Can I have a second? Tom, all in favor? Seven in favor, thank you. Other discussion items are the cal, the school calendar for first read.
So again, Suzanne and I have done a lot of meetings with our fellow superintendents. We've aligned this, this calendar as closely as we possibly can to Dover and then Sudsworth in Rochester secondarily. That's the lion's share of where our CTE kids go. It's, complies with statute, it has less than 10 conflicts with, I think Dover, we had two.
Yeah.
It's the best alignment we've ever had in relation to our CTE centers. So you don't have to take action tonight, I just, I would take any questions you have at this point, anything that pops up in your heads, just reminding you that even though it's our calendar, it's important for us to be as aligned to the CTE centers as possible so our students get the best education possible.
Oops, I noticed the February and April breaks look later than normal.
Yeah, thanks, Matt. So interestingly, these last, I think, three school years, we've been out of align with the state calendar, and our goal was to align with the state calendar. And for whatever reason, the state put the breaks later. And so this is aligned with the state as well, but I couldn't give you an explanation as to why they went to those weeks because it's a whole week later than they normally go.
So now the, our district will be on vacation with the rest of New Hampshire?
Will be on vacation with the rest of New Hampshire. The rest, the rest of the region is really what we were shooting for, and so we are in alignment with the rest of the region. And again, the region is important to us because we have three CTE centers that we send kids to.
So it looks like a motion for a, to approve the school calendar for first read? Brian, is there a second? Matt, any other questions or comments? All in favor? Seven in favor? Okay, we'll bring that back for second read and adoption at our next meeting. School board committee updates. Dan?
Yes, Policy Committee met last week, continuing work on some ongoing policies. I think most notably, and especially I want the public to know, given the occurrence of hate speech-related issues, particularly at our high school, Policy Committee has begun looking at all policy related to hate speech, looking for opportunities to make our policies clearer, more robust. Any, any negative incidents that happen in our district are an opportunity to update and revise and clarify our policies. Before the committee deliberated and took action, we invited our school board representative to the School Board Association, Gianna, to come in and discuss some of what she's learned about policies that both the association and other districts are looking at and/or have used related to hate speech. And so while we don't currently have a standalone hate speech policy, we're considering the merits of standalone versus reinforcing and updating current policy to be more specific, more direct with regard to hate speech, giving greater clarity both in policy and procedure for, to, you know, better equip us to respond to future events. Anything I missed, guys? Thanks.
Good job.
Other committee updates? Heather?
Sustainability met on the 11th. We've been working on one of our goals of reducing waste across the district, and the Moheramit Sustainability Club had a secretive food race competition. They weighed the waste after every grade level lunch, and the grade level with the least amount of waste, which I think was fourth grade, got an extra recess. They didn't know they were competing, but they won anyway. They are, the nutrition folks are working on reducing single-use plastics within the cafeterias, and so one of the changes that's happened more recently is the middle school and high school, they're, there are no longer single-use plastics, cookie bags. So the cookies are no longer wrapped in individual plastic bags. I believe the middle school is testing out baskets instead of paper boats and seeing how that works to maybe implement at the high school soon. The high school sustainability club sent six students to the Youth Climate Leaders Academy, and they looked at reducing contamination in the compost bins. The SIS club also has a second year of waste audit data to report out on, so we might be seeing some of that soon. So they're working on breaking that information down. And, and yeah, there was a lot of really good conversation. As Suzanne said, we are looking for additional community parent members, so if you're interested, email her, not me. And there was one other, oh, and then we're also looking at a event again in the spring around Earth Week, and we have a tentative date, but until that's solidified, I don't want to have it out there, so.
Thank you. Gianna, did you?
This isn't really an official committee because it doesn't exist yet, but I wanted to posit an idea. to posit an idea. I attended one of the NHSBA's online workshops, it was on the Legislative 2024 Preview. And there is a few things on, on that one. One is the fact that they are tracking 350 total bills for this year, 33 are retained from the last year, there's 220 that are new. The legislature is looking at the 1,250 bills. So this is, this is a New Hampshire specialness where you have this unspeakable amount of bills. Some of them I've been tracking myself, which leads me to another thing that was suggested inside the workshop, is that some school boards do have a legislative committee, and the NHSBA is happy to work with them in order to refine some of the documents that they provide, provide, so they could be utilized in order to make tracking easier, because when we're talking about that many bills, obviously it could be remarkably overwhelming. So one question I have to you is if you want to create such a committee? So that, that could be for a later discussion, because I couldn't think of where this would fit in the agenda very well. And the second one is that I personally wrote a letter to the Board of Education regarding the fact that there is a current proposal to remove background, background check requirements for learning everywhere programming, and to reduce the three-year provisional review to, they want to go from one year to a three-year provisional review. I didn't think that was particularly wonderful, because people who are teaching our children should absolutely have a background check. And then also, if it's a three-year rather than one-year provisional contract, it means that it's three years where you, you don't get a review how well it's being implemented and done. The public comment period for, regarding that learning everywhere change unfortunately closes on December 21st. So I did not see it in time in order to have a letter that I could present to you all of whether or not you'd want to have a school board sign onto it, I simply didn't see it in time, which is actually one of the reasons why I was wondering if we wanted to have a legislative committee, just to make it so at least I could perhaps be motivated to stay on top of it a little better. I'm admitting my fault here. So it's just something to consider.
If the board wants to consider that, you'd have to do bylaw changes. You have to articulate the legislative committee.
This is just something looking forward, which will probably go to the finance committee, but we might want to be thinking about, one of the goals is to re, relook at, revise the fee use for fields. That's, I think, one of our board, board goals, and I think we ought to just maybe do some back planning, like, when's that going to come? When should that be done? And if that's to be done at a certain date, when do we need to get started on it?
Thanks, Tom. We talked about that with Matt and Denise at our agenda setting. The first look at that is going to happen in the first meeting of January. Amy's done all the research to do the comparables, so that'll be put on your table for initial discussion on the January meeting. Questions from that meeting will carry into the second meeting of January, make sure we get the information, additional information that the board is looking for. But the goal would be, if possible, to have it done by the second meeting of February, so you'd have like four bites at the apple, because I know this is a big discussion that the board wants to have. So if, if everything worked out in terms of where you all are collectively, then we should be done by the second meeting in February.
So any members of the public? I do not see any. Okay. So our closing actions, future meetings, our next meeting is January 3rd of 2024, and then our budget hearing is January 10th. And then just a note that after our January 17th regular meeting, we have a joint board meeting with Barrington on the 23rd, and that will be at the Barrington SAU. And that is it for this evening. So can I have a motion to adjourn? Heather, a second. Gianna, all in favor? Seven in favor? We are adjourned. Happy holidays, and we'll see you in the new year.